Welcome, everybody, to Talk of the Bay. I'm your host, Mailing Obinata, and we at K Squid are so honored to have Salinas Councilmember Andrew Sandoval of District 5. Thank you so much for being here, Andrew.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you for having me.
I am so thrilled. So, one of the things that I've been very curious about are, of course, the Protect Salinas Renters Coalition. And a few months ago, I interviewed Dr. John Silva about that. But I've learned a little bit about you, Councilmember Sandoval, and I'd love to take this time today for everybody to get to know you. So, I guess first off, I can ask, what attracted you to the Protect Salinas Renters Coalition cause?
Sure. Well, I was a member of the city council that originally passed these four ordinances last year with the previous city council with Councilmember Rocha and Councilmember Gonzalez leading the charge to implement these. And when the new city council came on board, and it seemed like one of their first priorities was removing or repealing these ordinances, out of all things, you know, all things is taking tenant rights away and taking tenant protections away and raising people's rents. And so, I remember, I felt helpless. You know, we were outnumbered five to two, and I thought, what could we do? And so, I decided, one day, let's try to get some folks together. It was like a Monday night at eight o'clock, and I said, hey, come, let's see what we can do to stop this. And I think we had probably about 20, 25 people show up that night. And I said, hey, here's a crazy idea. You know, I think we could collect signatures and then stop this. And it was a broad coalition of not just doctors, but, you know, field workers and activists and organizers and community advocates and housing experts who showed up. And then, all of a sudden, they ran with it and, you know, were able to get 10,000 signatures in less than 30 days.
That was super impressive. So, before that time, what kinds of experience did you have? I mean, how did you know this might, like, take off?
I didn't know it was going to take off because one of my biggest struggles is getting people to participate in government. And I thought, you know, and I think I, you know, this last election, when we had five of my, or four of my colleagues voted out who were doing a great job and making all this great impact, it was a big hit, you know, to think they've done all this for the community and through all these, this money from this other candidates and property managers, they just got wiped out. And I thought, man, do residents, do they care? Or they just don't pay attention? Or what's going on? So, I think at our initial meeting, there wasn't a whole lot of enthusiasm. We're like, well, does the community, are they paying attention? Do they care? You know, are they being informed? And so, you know, this was incredible. I don't think I've ever seen anything like it myself. You know, I credit, you know, a lot of the main organizers, you know, my brother also was a big leader in that role. And they just, they came together and they formed this coalition that I've never seen before.
Wow. That's amazing. Yeah, and I was kind of, I was watching the, I guess, the Instagram posts and so on, like this many signatures, that many. And I was, it was great to see the progress. And just so that people know what was in the package, in the four ordinance package, in terms of the renters' rights, would you just describe them briefly?
Sure. Well, the first one is rent stabilization. Basically, what we did on the city council is we capped it this last year to only being able to increase about 2.75%. About, I think it's about 60 or 70% of the CPI, which everyone was lower. So, basically, if you paid about $2,000 in rent, previously, they could raise your rent about $200 a year. But with the new cap, it was about $60, a $60 annual increase. So, you know, over, I think, $1,500 they would save in rent. So, that was the first one. The second one we did was just cause eviction ordinance. So, basically, what we saw a lot in Salinas was people getting evicted because the landlord knew that if they evicted those folks who may be paying $2,000, the next tenants they could get could pay $3,000 because rent is just so crazy in the city of Salinas. So, we made it more difficult to evict good tenants, right? And so, we gave them stronger protections, including relocation assistance. And that way, if there was no fall eviction, they could be assisted with getting some assistance to move to a new place. Another thing we put into place was our tenant anti-harassment ordinance. We saw, basically, we made it illegal for landlords to harass tenants. Now, some of these laws were on the books, but enforcement was really difficult. And what we did is we gave our local city enforcement ability. So, if somebody's getting their water turned off, or, you know, repairs are not getting made, they could contact the city, and the city would do, basically, advocacy on their behalf in contacting landlords and make sure they're not getting harassed. So, we put a lot of these protections into place. So, those were, that's a little breakdown of the ordinances.
Thank you. And just for people out there, CPI stands for the Consumer Price Index. So, that is a kind of a metric for, like, when you're paying more for goods, et cetera, et cetera, your cost of living is going up. So, yeah. So, now that people have collected those signatures, what's happening right now?
So, right now, the Monterey County Elections Department is verifying those signatures to make sure that they're registered voters in the city of Salinas. And so, I think we're only about seven days out from the 30-day deadline, where they'll be running through their accounts, verifying signatures, and letting us know if we've collected sufficient valid signatures. And we needed about 7,000. We ended up collecting about 10,600, something like that.
Oh, nice.
So, we do have a decent cushion to make sure that we got sufficient. So, we feel comfortable and excited.
So, you, as an elected official, when you see that level of engagement from voters, what kind of signal is the public sending to city council members with just the act of having all those signatures in support of those ordinances?
Yeah, I think there's probably a song that I'm going to misquote, but we're not going to, we're not going to take it anymore, I'm sure. And I don't know the context of that song, but that just came to mind. I think people are paying attention. And I think a lot of these new city council members thought that they were going to come in, and people weren't going to pay attention. And they know that they won the election with lots and lots of money. So, they're probably like, ah, we can probably do whatever we want because the voter won't pay attention, the residents won't pay attention. We're good. We got the money, we got the support from, you know, some of these property managers. So, they're not concerned. So, this was a big win for the community. And I think more and more, people are starting to pay attention. We're like, wait, it does matter who I vote for. Wait, I should probably ask them questions. And unfortunately, right now, what's happening is, you know, I think that a lot of these council members won't. One, I haven't heard of any of them having a community meeting since they got elected.
None of them?
No. Well, Jose Luis Barajas had a meeting where people could talk at him or ask him questions, but I don't think he responded. It was on Instagram. It was very interesting. He was going to have something called Cafe con Jose, Coffee with Jose, but he all of a sudden canceled that, never rescheduled it. So, these folks, you know, they're not facing their public because they're, I think what they're hoping is that people will just go away. People forget.
Wow.
That's what I'm thinking.
Wow, that's really interesting. So, I'm just curious, did you hear any interesting, like, experiences or anecdotes from people as a result of, like, the process of gathering signatures, or even from the ordinance as being sort of maintained in place as a signature processing? I'm not sure what it's called, the vetting of the signatures? Have you heard any interesting stories from people?
Well, I'll just touch base on some of our volunteers who dedicated countless hours to collecting signatures. I want to just highlight, I think, one of our volunteers, Nidia, who dedicated countless hours a day and ten away from her family. I think she might have been bitten by a dog.
Oh, no.
But, you know, she was just so dedicated. And so were so many of these people. And some of them, keep in mind, were not renters. You know, I think you interviewed Dr. John, and what we saw was even some landlords help us collect signatures or sign. You'd be surprised. It was a broad coalition because they know that although they may be good landlords, there's a lot of bad landlords out there. But I do want to share, as I was driving over here, you know, somebody shared a story that, well, first, I was collecting signatures at Salinas Soccer Field about almost 30 days ago, and I ran into a lady, and I was, you know, giving her the information, hey, did you know that, you know, we passed this limit on rent, and, but they overturned it? And she goes, well, that makes sense because all of a sudden, I got an increase in my rent. I think it was going to be, you know, almost $200, and I didn't understand why. But they told me not to pay it until July 5th, and I didn't understand it. And I said, well, I can tell you why they don't want you to pay it till July 5th. They're hoping we don't collect the 10,000 signatures.
That's right.
And so, she offered to help, and I think she might have collected, you know, 10, 12 signatures for us. And then, she just contacted me today, and she said, you know, I got a new notice, and now my rent's only going up, I want to say, like, $60 or something. And I think her savings is going to be like, you know, maybe $1,500 for this year, and she's over the moon.
That's great.
You know, so that stuff is really affecting people. You know, you can't just come up with an extra $1,500. So, this is going to affect people's lives.
Thank you for sharing that. And did you learn anything? Because you were saying, kind of in the beginning of the process, you weren't sure if people were going to be, you know, were they going to pay attention? And obviously, people are paying attention. Are there just even some lessons for you, even, you know, with your experience in office and so on? Are there things that surprised you?
Maybe not surprising, but it was probably a good wake-up call that in order to get the community involved, it has to be a broad coalition of people. It's got to be knocking on doors. It's got to be social media. It's got to be doing interviews. It's got to be, you know, talking to your neighbors, you know, approaching random people at the grocery store, talking to them about how important this is. It's a heavy lift. Otherwise, big money wins.
Right. And I want to hear a little bit about the good landlords kind of worrying about the bad landlords. Did you hear people talking about that and saying, like, they were worried about, like, what would happen to renters, even as landlords? That's kind of interesting.
Yeah. So, I was at an event that former councilmember Orlando Osorio organized, called Grub and Hub in Salinas. It's a taco truck event. And I was approaching some folks to sign, and they said, oh, no, I'm a landlord. This is going to hurt me. And I said, well, hold on. Well, what's your concern? Let me see if I can address your concern. And he goes, well, this is going to make less money for me, and this is, you know, and it's going to be hard to get tenants out. And I said, okay, well, you have a rental? He goes, yeah, I got a couple of houses. I go, well, did you know, first of all, this only affects multi-residential units, mostly apartments? So, it doesn't affect him, the actual rent part, right?
Right.
But then he goes, but then if somebody moves out, then I have to help them move out, you know, pay some of their relocation costs. And I said, yes, because there's some landlords that will kick people out to raise the next tenants. He goes, yeah, well, I don't do that to my tenants. I'm, okay, so that's not really a concern for you then?
It also doesn't apply to him.
Doesn't apply because if you're a good landlord. And then, I go, the other ordinance is, you know, harassment is there's landlords who shut people's water off, who, you know, they just do whatever they can to make their life difficult. He goes, well, I don't do that. You know, I don't harass my tenants. So, he went ahead and signed.
Wow.
And so, I'm like, I'm sitting there, and I'm like, wait a second. You know, it kind of, you know, made my heart beat a little more excited that, you know, that somebody who, you know, is, you know, that's his business investment would still support something like this.
Wow, that's wonderful to hear. And it's, I'm so glad that he was open to talking with you.
I think that's actually one thing that doesn't happen very often. There's not people having conversations about these issues. There's just that media information and the scare tactics. And then, you know, you want people to sit at the table, and very often, they won't.
Right. But, yeah, having that knee-jerk reaction and being able to get past that is so powerful. So, did you hear more stories like that, when, like, the light bulb came on when people realized, like, oh, wait, but I'm a good landlord, so I'm not going to be, I'm not going to get in trouble with these ordinances?
Yeah, yeah. So, there's actually, you know, I had family who was also landlords, did the same thing, helped collect signatures. So, there was a big realization that, yeah, there is a big problem of slum lords, basically, and the need to protect people from those. And how it affects people's housing, right? I mean, at the end of the day, you know, one thing that Dr. John Silva, in the doctor's perspective, taught me is that, that housing, you know, it didn't hit me initially. It affects kids' health, right? Not just their mental health, their well-being, you know, their stress level, their academic success. And so, I think a lot of people are starting to realize, you know, how this affects people in their own neighborhood. Now, think about this. We had some folks who lived, I think, they're maybe from Germany or something. I think Dr. John introduced me, no, another doctor introduced me, and they're, you know, they lived in Salinas 50 years. And I said, what do you, why are you guys here? Like, you don't look like the demographic that would be supporting renters, I had to say, you know? And they're like, no, but we see our neighbors. We see our neighbors that, you know, got pushed out of a house. We had family who, you know, was kicked out so somebody else could move in. And so, you're right, we're retired, you know, we have it good, but this affects our neighborhood because now our neighborhood doesn't have that stability. And so, I thought, wow, that makes sense. Then I had a business owner tell me, you know, that, you know, although they're not a renter either, less disposable income for these renters means they might not visit their restaurant as much. They may not get tutoring services.
Right, right. The light bulb comes on, yes.
And they're like, wait a second, this is important, you know? And then, I was eating lunch one time at a restaurant, and the lady said, you know what? I'm so glad you guys got the signatures. We had a lady who hadn't seen here for about three weeks, and she was a regular. She'd come every week, and we asked her, why haven't you been here? And she says, well, I had to move to King City.
Oh, my goodness.
Because the rent is just too crazy here. So, it's like everyone's starting, it's starting to click.
Right. So, you were mentioning the multi, I'm sorry, the multi-unit landlords versus, like, kind of like mom and pop type landlords. Is that, did you ever hear kind words from, like, these bigger landlords?
No.
Okay, wow, okay. I'm shocked. I'm shocked. Okay, okay. No kind words.
No. But what I did hear is some horror stories from some of their tenants. I think, you know, I'm going to go ahead and, you know, UDR is, I think, owns thousands of units in the city of Salinas. And when I walked the neighborhood, I didn't know which units were theirs until I walked in and knocked on some doors. And I'm like, man, some of this stuff looks like the termites are eating this place alive. And, you know, lawns are dead, and trees are falling apart, and, you know, people are starting to come out of their house and say, well, you know what they used to do here? They used to fix things. And now, we don't even have a property manager. We have to use everything through an app. And, you know, we can never get nothing fixed. And so, I did receive a letter from them the other day asking for some minor adjustments to our ordinance, which basically, you know, raised the rent and a bunch of different things. But I just, it's really sad to see how negatively, you know, taking these ordinances will have on our residents in Salinas. And people don't realize that.
Thank you. I just want to pivot to, like, I guess, getting to know you, just like, as an individual. So, obviously, you're in elected office and pursuing various things. But what sparked your interest in serving the public in this way?
Sure. Well, back in 2017, I was just minding my own business. I used to have a bridal shop. It's called Belle's Bridal in Quinceañera. And I used to do tailoring. As a matter of fact, I could still fix your pants, a rip, do some hems. If you want something tapered, let out, I can still do some of that stuff. But I had a bridal shop where we did wedding dresses, quinceañera, prom tuxes for many years. And one day, my daughter says, hey, Dad, if you come to a PTA meeting, I get extra credit. And we used to have a business in the mall. So, we used to work 11 hours a day. And I said, sure, I'll go. And so, I went. And that's when I started noticing some, you know, funny business going on with PTA budget and, you know, parents reaching out for academic support and them being told, well, there's no money. And so, my mind is, well, can I see the money? You know, show me, show me the budget.
Yeah.
You know, maybe we can figure something out. And I'm more like, you know, maybe we can raise the money. We can fundraise. We can, you know, whatever we need to do. We were a small school. My kids used to attend a charter school at the time. And so, then, apparently, people don't like you asking questions about money. I didn't know that. And so, that led me down a path of discovering, you know, things like nepotism, which I had never even paid attention to because I was busy just being married and raising my kids, and conflict of interest, and public contracts.
Oh, my gosh.
It led me down a path of real estate fraud, where I discovered all kinds.
Are you serious?
Totally, totally serious. So, then I'm like, wait, this can't be right. It's a public agency. So, I started reaching out to electeds around the area. And they could see me coming. They'd be like, oh, no, here comes Andrew. You know, what does he want? And I'm like, well, can we just get people to, like, to enforce the laws and, like, look into how this affects our students? And nobody would do it.
Oh, wow.
And I remember, I'm like, wait a second, these are electeds. They're like, ooh, you know, these people in power, and they should be able to do things. And then, that's when I discovered, you know, most electeds either are non-responsive or they want to stay in their lane.
Okay.
I get that law, you know, they don't want to ruffle anybody's feathers. Don't forget, we got to get reelected, right? We don't want to make the wrong people mad. But anyways, that's how I got into government. And they almost ended up shutting the school down because they launched an investigation into conflict of interest, all kinds of stuff. It's all online. And then, I'm like, wait a second, how do I get people to do the right thing if they're already in charge and they won't?
Right.
And so, I thought, well, maybe I should run for one of these positions. And so, I decided, well, maybe I should run for, you know, some kind of school board. But at that time, people had seen how persistent I was. And they're like, well, don't get me wrong, school board's important, Andrew, but our city is like, has all these issues very similar to what you're dealing with. And I said, but I don't know about the city. So, you know, I started learning, getting involved. But I just want to go back to the school thing. You know, the principal at the time didn't like the questioning so bad that one day, she, I was, we were at a PTA meeting, and she kicked me and my wife off of campus.
Oh, my goodness.
And, you know, as you can tell, I'm a big guy. And so, it's easy to say I'm a big, scary, intimidating guy. And so...
You don't seem intimidating.
I'm rar. So, anyways, I got kicked off of campus. We ended up fighting and deciding we're going to stay because we didn't do anything wrong.
Right.
And people started sharing their stories about how they had been harassed as well. And so, me and my wife, one day, got together, and we said, you know what, we're going to stay there. So, I picked my wife a lot because she supported me in my crazy adventures. Otherwise, I wouldn't be able to do what I do. But believe it or not, after we went back on campus, one day, my wife calls me, and she says, honey, there's a sheriff at the house.
Oh, my goodness.
And so, I'm freaking out because I'm a big guy. I may look tough with my little goatee, but I've never been in trouble with the law. And so, I'm like, I'm not going home.
Okay.
And she goes, get your butt home. I'm not going, I've never been in trouble with the law. What is the sheriff doing there? And so, I drove around Salinas probably 45 minutes, and she finally said, get your butt home. And so, I ended up pulling up to the house, and there's a sheriff there, and I'm freaking out. My heart is racing. And luckily, it was Sheriff Scott Davis, who used to be on the city council. And so, he had seen me reaching out to people, and he knew what was going on. And so, he goes, Andrew, I got to serve you with this restraining order. And I'm like, what the heck? He goes, yeah, just go back to work. It's, you know, it's no big, it's no big deal. And here I am, like, what is going on? So, anyways, I end up saying, can I give you a big hug? Because I'm Lisa, I know it's you, you know, somebody I semi-know. Anyways, and so, that's how I learned how bad people don't want to do the right thing and how they want to really push people out.
Wow.
So, my wife, you know, supported me, my kids supported me, and we ended up fighting the restraining order. And the restraining order ended up getting dismissed through something called an anti-slap motion.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it's basically, it's a lawsuit that people can file, that they file, or an action to stop people's participation, right, their legal right to participate. And so, the school ended up having to pay my legal fees, and they almost shut the school down. The principal resigned.
Wow.
And the board resigned, and everyone, it just, it improved. And then, it hit me. I'm like, wait, well, this was great, but I'm really disappointed in a lot of elected officials. I think there was maybe one or two, I think Tony Barrero was one of them, who actually said, you know what, Andrew, let's get you some help. Let's put pressure on the superintendent to do the right thing. And so, that's how I decided, you know what, if these fools, excuse my language, these fools, if these fools, you know, can be in office, you know, maybe I can make a difference. Maybe I can commit to being transparent and at least try my best. And so, that's, in 2018, I ran for office. Unfortunately, I didn't know that a lot of people in office need a lot of money to win.
Right.
So, here I am, thinking, oh, I'll just talk to my neighbors, and it's going to be good. And, you know, I raised, I think, about $5,000, and my opponent might have raised like $30,000.
Oh, my goodness.
And then, I'm like, uh, what am I supposed to do? I don't want to take nobody's money because that's, I don't want to owe anybody, you know? That's a dangerous slope. So, you know, I think she outspent me 5 to 1, but I lost at that time, less than 1%. I lost by 86 votes or something.
Oh, my goodness. Wow.
And so, of course, it was devastating. But I thought, you know what, I'm going to give it another shot. And here we are. I ran for office, and I determined, I was determined to stay true to myself, be transparent, and just try, you know, my best. And that's how I got into office. So, but I got four kids. I just want to give a shout out to my four kids. They are four teenagers.
Oh, my goodness. That's a lot of work.
They've learned, while my wife is awesome, and my wife is awesome. And they've, you know, they've learned a lot, and they've grown as individuals because they've seen their dad's struggle. And they've been there, too. They attended public comment, and my daughter spoke up. And, you know, she learned how to be an activist as well. And so, but that's how we got here.
What an interesting learning experience it is to have your four children kind of absorbing lessons about public service and, I'm assuming, like, democracy, watching you. And you were referring to struggles. Do you want to share any stories of, like, some of these struggles that they were kind of watching you carry?
Sure. Well, definitely, of course, you know, being kicked off the campus of a school where you used to be the PTA treasurer. And keep in mind, I used to lead the campouts and the assemblies and get kids excited about fundraising. You know, definitely, they saw a lot of injustices. But I'm proud of my kids. You know, I think they've all seen what's wrong. They get to see what's wrong, and I think they've all raised their voices, you know, in one way or another, saying, you know what, Dad, this isn't right. I told them what they should do. My daughter, I remember one time, they, I think they banned playing with balls during recess or something. And I think in protest, she organized all her friends that wore black shirts.
Oh, my gosh. Wow.
And so, you know, they've done different things, all my kids have. And one of my sons went out of his comfort zone, and I think he ran for a school president.
Oh, my gosh.
And won. And my daughter went for, they had a mayor and vice mayor in middle school. And, you know, and my twins, they've all, they've all seen injustices and seen the reality of, you know, either helping people and guiding them to the right thing, or maybe sometimes speaking on their behalf, which sometimes I warn them because, you know, the reality is, you know, when you speak up, sometimes there's some serious retaliation. And I tell them, you know, be cautious, you know, do the right thing, but always try to educate and support people. And then, if they can't advocate, of course, you know, you got to step in sometimes.
So, speaking of retaliation, you yourself faced, like, recall effort. Would you like to share a little bit about that?
Sure. So, basically, on Halloween, I was at home. I think my wife went to go drop off something, maybe one of my kids somewhere. And I was handing out candy. I get a knock on the door, and sure enough, instead of kids, there's a young lady there, and she's serving me recall papers.
Oh, my God.
Talk about trick or treat.
Trick or treat. Oh, my gosh. Wow.
Anyways, they served me some recall papers, all kinds of outlandish accusations, like, that I fixed my own street instead of building a rec center. And I'm like, have you been down my street? And so, or things like, I've sued public agencies, and that's how I profit. You know, that's how I make money. And by the way, I have sued several public agencies. I can share a little bit about that. But there was just a lot of things. They said, I filed frivolous complaints against my colleagues. They were referring to McShane and the mayor. And the reason was because they were doing some shady stuff, you know, conflict of interest. You can't be, you know, funneling money to your own nonprofit while you're on the city council. Like, that's not allowed. And so, things like that. And so, I was like, oh, my God. It was pretty devastating, right? And I didn't understand, like, why, why, you know? And then, I started looking through some of the names. And I'm like, wait a second, I go to church with this lady. Wait, I know this guy. You know, I grew up with him. And so, what I ended up finding out was a lot of people weren't even told what they were signing.
Oh, they were tricked.
They were tricked.
Oh, wow.
And so, a lot of people, you know, signed papers saying that, you know, we don't support this.
Wow.
Yeah. And apparently, they hired walkers. But go ahead.
So, I just want to pause here. I think we need to do the 30-minute station break. I'm going to tell you that you're listening to K Squid at 89.5, 89.7, and 90.7 FM. We are K S Q T in Prundale, K S Q D in Santa Cruz, and we're on your various devices at ksqd.org. We are back with our guest, Salinas Councilmember Andrew Sandoval. And we were just talking about, I guess, facing great opposition. And I became curious to know, so, Andrew, when you have, when you have, like, these recall papers being served to you instead of, like, people getting Halloween candy, for example, and I think a lot of people might, you know, kind of take their ball and, you know, pack it up and go home. But obviously, that's not how you react to negativity. So, what are the values that guide you in the way you conduct yourself as an elected official and how you serve the public?
You know, it's, it's interesting because I've never actually thought about this question. You know, um, I should probably should get a value statement. But you know, I, I think it, it sounds cheesy, but it, it, I think, you know, I always have to think, well, one, how is this going to affect our residents? And, and the importance of, of what, you know, everyone always talks about transparency and you wonder, well, what does that mean? Or everyone talks about equity, you know, the, these are, these are nice little words that people use. Equality, equity, transparency, and ultimately making the best decision for folks. But I just, you know, I, I decided I have to stick to who I am. I think when I got elected, you know, I always wondered like, do I have to put on like a personality or?
Right.
You know, I gotta get elected. Does that mean I gotta trick people? And then I'm like, wait a second, it's too hard to keep up with lies. Makes it too complicated. And I thought, you know, people are either going to like me or they're not, or they're going to trust me or they're not. And so I always, I always think of this, I, you know, a fight like something like, you know, trying to get equal rates for venues like the Rodeo, which the city owns. You know, although I'm not a big fan of concerts, but I recognize that people are always complaining about things to do in Salinas. So do you imagine if we actually had a transparent process to how people can access Rodeo facilities or sports complex, we could have concerts every week.
Right.
And so that access, you know, when I first ran, I wanted people to have access to school districts, to parks, to things like that. And so that is just so important to me because if I can make something more accessible for somebody, that could really change. You know, that might provide a job for somebody who's going to be working those concerts, or that might be providing entertainment uh, or something to do as opposed to them, you know, being out there doing stuff they shouldn't do. So that transparency and that, you know, that access and things being fair is just so important to me. And, um, I just, I just can't let it go. Like it's just so important. I'm in a position, I was elected by the residents of District Five, and I represent about 30,000 people. And I take that so seriously. Like I am just so determined to get things done for them. It's a big responsibility. Sometimes I think, what, what am I even doing here?
Wouldn't life be easier if you're just like, you know, you're just, just Netflix and chill?
You know, you know, I, I'm sure my wife thinks that too. And, and you know, I could be, you know, back in business and doing so many other things, but things like the rent stabilization that affects people's livelihoods, you know, and I attribute that a lot to my, to my mom and dad, um, and my grandparents. You know, for instilling that, the importance of helping others. Yes, you do have to make a living and, but, but you know, being in a position to help others, it's just so important to me. You know, like I said, somebody just called me and, you know, they're going to save $1,500 a year. And that's life changing for some people.
Yeah. I would say for most Americans.
Yeah. And so that really drives me and obviously my wife and my kids support me so much to me. But yeah, I, I, I've thought about it. I'm like, wait a second, I'm about to get recalled. And apparently, you know, I've got, um, you know, I had three ag companies spend about $80,000 to recall me.
Oh, my gosh. I'm just curious, why were the ag companies so, why were they trying so hard to do a recall on you?
So I'm going to have to guess. Now, I'm going to have to guess.
Okay, speculation.
I have to speculate because you know, although I've attempted to reach out to Bruce Taylor, the owner of Taylor Farms. And I reached out to Steve Ish, who's the vice president of Taylor Farms, who said he'd helped me get a meeting, but no response yet. You know, I'd like to hear from them. You know, I, Steve Ish said he's out of the country and you know, I just never hear back. I'll have to follow up after this interview. But I'd like to, I'd like to ask them, you know, why did Tanner Moran Antle? Why did Taylor Farms, you know, give so much money? Like, you know, I think that's the big mystery, you know, they spent so much money. If I had to guess, like I said, it's all speculation is, is, um, you know, one of the reasons I ran for, for government is because I didn't think, uh, City Salinas spent taxpayer money as wisely as they should. And it wasn't proper oversight. And so, you know, I kept hearing residents saying, you know, we want more rec services. We need more police. We need more fire and we do, we need more of it. We need to cover our employees pension. We need more parks workers, you know, I, I get it. And the only way I know to get more is to get more money. And, but I don't want to tax our residents. Our residents have already paid enough taxes. And frankly, you know, sometimes I'm like, I don't think they trust us. I go, you know, and, and I wouldn't blame them. I don't think we've been 100% transparent with things. And so I remember this, um, activist, uh, godfather of Lulac, his name was Crescencio Padilla, who proposed a, a sales tax on, or a tax on ag. And he proposed like a penny a box. And so I, you know, naive, just got elected. I'm like, well, I don't want to tax residents. But you know, I gotta find money and I think ag is like an eight billion dollar industry. And I remember a reporter, Claudia Melendez, Voices of Monterey, she, one of her interview questions when I was running for office is like, hey, do you know how much money the ag industry contributes to Salinas's tax base? I said, no. I said, no. And I could never find it. As a matter of fact, our last budget, I asked our finance director to give me that info. Apparently nobody knows. Don't get, don't get me wrong. They pay people salad, like every company does. But other than property taxes, since they're not an end user, right? They don't pay sales tax. But they do use our fire department and our police department. So I proposed a tax and with council member Brer support, we're supposed to review, review that. And so, you know, I, I heard rumors that one day there was a big meeting in Ag and, you know, they said, oh, this council member wants to propose a dollar a box on Ag.
Oh, my gosh.
And of course I'm like, I propose a penny a box, dude.
Okay.
And, um, anyways, that's what I speculate that their, their motivation was. But until I meet with, uh,
Sure.
With Brucey, I'll call him Brucey, uh, Bruce Taylor, I won't know, you know, right? Exactly why. But, but the, uh, the guy leading the recall, Tyler Barola, ended up recanting and, uh, taking down his post and having no involvement with the recall. And I'm sure he had ambitions of running for my seat, which, you know, we're a democracy, anybody can run, but maybe you shouldn't be slandering people in the process. But, um, but now, you know, it's, it's kind of fizzled out, you know, I think they still, they still owe the attorneys like $10,000 and.
When you say owe the attorneys, which attorneys?
So there's some, I can't think of their name right now, but there's some attorney firm that, that, um, Ruton, I think they're called, um, that they, uh, they were the legal counsel. And I actually, I could never find out. I could never speak with anybody about the recall. Neither could my residents. They called the phone numbers on there, so nobody would answer like, what's going on?
Right.
So the, the campaign committee is still active, but there hasn't been any movement. So I kind of think it fizzled out.
Oh, okay.
I think most of my residents, you know, I do, I do my best to reach out to them and I'm always up for answering questions. I don't really, even those that don't like me, I still help them. It's my, it's my responsibility.
What's an example of when you helped somebody who maybe didn't vote for you or doesn't like you?
Oh, sure. Um, there's a, a gentleman who runs one of the crime watch pages, uh, which I'm banned from, by the way. These social media pages, apparently I'm, I'm banned from.
Oh, okay.
I'm actually banned from a couple of them. I don't know why, but, but he reached out to me for some help about, you know, um, finding out why the police department doesn't, uh, allow access to their bandwidth or, or some, something along those lines. You know how they used to let people listen into radio communications? Or he had some issues with his neighbors. And so I, I still help out. I'm still responsive. You know, it's my responsibility, you know? And so I, I take that seriously. So love me or hate me, I'm still going to respond to you. It's okay.
That's nice. That's doing the job. I just want to pivot to a spicy topic. The, that of the Amazon property.
Oh, joy.
So you were, right? You, you were, uh, I guess you were like ground zero for this information. So, were you surprised that the information about Amazon, like the acquisition of the property was so hush, hush?
Yeah. So strangely enough, when I ran for office, I remember being interviewed by the Monterey County Weekly. And at that time, this was, I, I think, I want to, well, a year before I, I was in office. They asked, uh, I guess the city manager at the time signed the non-disclosure agreement. And I said, well, I'd never be in favor of that, you know, we, we should be open with the public and, and what gives the city manager the authority to do that? You know, like, he's an employee of the city. And so when I ran for office, I just started to hear rumors from members of the public, hey, I hear Amazon's coming. And, and you know, there are things that, that are governed by something called the Brown Act, things we discuss behind closed doors. That, that, that we're not allowed to legally share. And so, you know, there was some topics in there discussed and I always thought, well, okay, I may not be able to talk about what was discussed in there, but my approach is what is public information?
Sure.
What is something that I as a member of the public can, can add, can find on my own? And so when I hear people and you know, whispering Amazon, I'm like, well, let me find out what I can. And so what I, what I was able to find out is that Amazon purchased a piece of land. And so I had already been discussing with our manager at the time, hey, you know, I believe in transparency. The public has a right to know. And what, what occurred was that our, our previous city manager, uh, which was terminated, by the way unanimously, uh, despite our former mayor's attempt to blame the city council, she was there at that vote. He signed a minor amendment to allow that not to go through a typical process of a public hearing in the planning commission and all those things.
Oh.
And I'm like, what the heck? Like, even if you want to build a Mexican restaurant where it doesn't go wrong.
You have to.
But Amazon, millions of, what is happening here? And so I found out what was public information, which was the land sale and the, and so on, on one Friday night, after I got frustrated that, you know, I had a responsibility to tell the residents what I knew. Uh, but was fearful of being prosecuted for disclosing something in closed session. And so I found out what was legally disclosable. And, you know, on Friday, I don't remember what time for my city cell phone, I sent a text message to the media and I said, hey, FYI, I don't remember the exact word, Amazon acquired this property and that night, you know, the news broke. And I think right before that, uh, council member McShane had just resigned.
Oh.
Uh, you know, he, he called the city council at the time dysfunctional, but that's a whole story for another day why he really left and sold his home and moved away. But, um, but yeah, and of course at the time, our city staff was not too thrilled with that. Um, because you know, now it's another mess that needs to be cleaned up. And then I thought, why, why are you mad at me? Shouldn't you all be mad at yourselves, you know?
Right. For hiding.
You know, and so, you know, I, I'm not always, you know, people's favorite person. But you know, I gotta stick to my guns and try to do what's best for the community, you know?
What are your greatest concerns with, with something like, like that? Uh, Amazon buying like a huge amount of, uh, real estate and, and setting up their, uh, business operations?
Well, I have a lot of concerns because if it was going to be, for examples, money that the city contributed for infrastructure or something like that, I'm a really big supporter of unions and project labor agreements and livable wages. And so if the city, if people were notified properly, then you know, our local building trades would have had an opportunity to bid for some of those jobs. Instead of those jobs being contracted out from other areas.
Oh, is that what's happening?
Yeah. So that, that, that's some of the stuff that is my concern. Obviously that was ag land and, and there was no traffic study done. So, you know, when the neighbors come knocking on Margaret DeRigo's door, hey, look at all this traffic. You know, there was no traffic study done. There was no impact study done. You know, there's just a lot of things that big corporations shouldn't get a free pass on.
And for people who don't know what a project labor agreement is, would you like to briefly describe that?
Sure. Well, basically it's an agreement to pay a livable wage on projects that, that, you know, that, uh, you know, either government agencies enter in or, or just, you know, it could, it could be a private builder too, that enters into an agreement. So, and livable wage means that, you know, they're going to pay, you know, uh, a livable wage for those people doing the work. And, uh, that'll provide good jobs, which in turn helps our economy and provides good health insurance and also ensures good quality products, good quality building. Because sometimes when they bring outside labor, they don't, they don't, uh, they might not be part of a union who provides better training, better accountability and better standards. And so all that stuff plays a factor in, in, in our, in our region, right? And people's success and our city's success.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, I would hope that one of the largest companies, and it's publicly traded and everything, has, has access to a lot of money, would be able to afford to pay for, um, like the prevailing wage and other labor standards in the construction of its building. So I'm sad to hear if they're not doing that. So I can understand, um, the source of concern.
I do want to say there are, there was, I think, the one or two unions that were able to get some work.
Oh, okay.
So I'm not, but, but if it was a public process, it would have been, I think, a much more extensive union built facility.
It's interesting. Also, you would think like, it's such a big company. I mean, why does it, like, why does it have to hide what it's doing? Like if you're, you know, if you have a successful company, whatever the business is, it can be a bakery or whatever, you don't hide like, oh, I'm going to open a store or whatever. You want people to know, like, I'm doing these great things. So it's, it's weird. It just sounds, it sounds so weird that um, the, the process by which they acquired permission from the, what you said, the city manager and the kind of sidestepping a normal process. It just has weird, weird vibes all over it. And I would think, why, why not be proud? Why not be transparent? Why not stand, you know, in the sunlight and say like, I'm Jeff Bezos and I'm proud of what I do every day.
I wonder why.
I wonder why. Don't you want to be able to sleep at night? So, um, as we, as we, um, as we close out our show for today, and I, I thank you for covering like so many, so many things. As people listen and they think about, and they're kind of processing everything you've shared here, what are some things you'd love for people to kind of take away as like homework? Whether they're like a renter, you know, interested in what's happening with the ordinance or interested in, in Amazon or interested in the Rodeo? And interested in any of the issues that we've discussed here today or anything else? Do you have like advice for people to take away, um, after listening to you?
Sure. Well, number one is you gotta get engaged, whether that is watching our meetings on YouTube. You know, you can log in via Zoom, try to make a public comment. I know our mayor seems to be cutting public comment on a regular basis, but show up to a council meeting, approach the council members, you know, and ask for a meeting. You know, I, I just had an opportunity to speak to some of our youth in government, uh, folks who, who actually some of them got engaged because they got engaged in wanting to become, uh, youth commissioners, uh, because of the rent situation. They want to know how they can help. And so I told them, I said, why don't you call these council members one by one? Their phone numbers on the city. Request a meeting, invite your friends, ask them for answers. And then, then, then follow up with them. Cause what people will do is they will reach out to somebody one time. And then that's it. Oh, it didn't work. And, and what I've learned in government is you have to be persistent. You have to be persistent. So reach out, get engaged and, and, um, something like this rent stabilization issue, you know, we're going to need a lot of volunteers. I'm anticipating, I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful the city council will do the right thing. They have a chance to repeal their repeal.
Right.
But what I'm guessing is going to happen, this is just my guess, is that they're going to call for a special election. That's going to cost the city of Salinas 1.6 million dollars around there.
Sounds like a lot of money.
But since people are not engaged, if they call a special election, it can happen so quickly. And so people might not pay attention. They'll be able to hire campaign walkers when we are a grassroots movement. So even if you're not from Salinas, you know, you might know a renter in Salinas, you can come spread the word on social media, come knock on doors. They can reach out to me. I'm on Instagram. You know, I have a website, andrewsandoval.com. You know, just start asking questions. And if you ever wondered like, how things work, you know, you feel free to reach out to me. I try to do some educational videos.
Oh, really?
Yeah. You know, if you want to learn about public records or things like the Brown Act or, you know.
Oh, are those on your Instagram or?
They're, they're on my, on my, um, on your website. Yeah. There's, it's andrewsandoval.com. There's some of my public interest work. You know, there needs to be more people asking questions. Sometimes people are like, oh, it's just Andrew again. I'm like, well, okay, how about you help out, you know?
Right, right.
You wouldn't believe how many phone calls I get about, um, an issue in a school district. And I'll give you an example. There's, somebody contacted me and said, you know what? There's a teacher acting inappropriate in the city of Greenfield, uh, school district. And, and apparently he's been, uh, communicating with students inappropriately.
Oh, no.
I'm like, no, can't be real. And so I, I requested a public records request and they sent me a copy of his investigation. Apparently he texts a student 2,000 times in one school year.
Oh, my God.
And guess what? He's still there.
Wow.
And so there's all these, these issues with accountability. And that's on my website. There's a andrewsandoval.com. There's a, some public interest work where, you know, you have to have people willing to hold people accountable. But the only way to do that is to get engaged with your local government. And I'm sure, you know, there's listeners out there who said, well, I go in there and they just don't listen to me. Well, you gotta be persistent and you gotta just be persistent and persistent. And persistent.
And persistent and keep, keep, uh, keep on it. Well, thank you so much, Councilmember Sandoval. Uh, I was very much looking forward to this conversation. I'm so honored that you're here in the, in the studio with us. I learned, I learned a lot. I hope everybody learned so much. And I guess I'm, I'm just personally thankful that you continue doing what you're doing despite huge, huge efforts to the contrary, to kind of take you off your path. So I think that is inspiring. And of course, um, I'm very inspired hearing about the Protect Salinas Renters Coalition and the accomplishments made so far. So I will, I'll kind of keep an eye on that. Um, and you shared yours, uh, your website, andrewsandoval.com. Are there, if people fall in love with you and listening to you today and they want to start following you on other medias, what, where should they go?
Sure. I'm on Instagram, you know, Andrew Sandoval, Councilmember. But you know, right now the pressing issue is protect Salinas renters. You know, Um, you know, they have a website. It's called Protect Salinas Renters. And you know, just to give you an idea, um, you know, 50, I think it's 57 or 53% of Salinas residents' rent. You know, and sometimes it's about 70% of their income.
Wow.
You know, and there's multi-families in there. So my, my final thoughts are please, please contact protectsalinasrenters.com. Please step up to volunteer. I think there's a place you can sign up to volunteer on there. And you know, I'm not a big asker for money, but if you can contribute to a cause right now, it is to that Protect Salinas Renters. Because let me tell you, this movement in Salinas could affect issues statewide.
Oh, really?
Yes. Because if they see that residents in Salinas rise up to give themselves more rights and more protections and protect their rent, imagine this could inspire other bigger cities to say, you know what? Let's get an initiative going. So if I had to guess right now, there's probably an organization forming against renters and they're going to, they're going to deceive renters. Actually there is, there's a, and I wish I had more time. The Salinas Valley Chamber of Commerce put out a, a door hanger.
Oh.
Where they said, oh, renters, you are not alone. And basically, yeah, and I'll have to send you a copy of that. They're going to start deceiving people and spending a lot of money to stop this movement. And, um, so this is, you know, we, we need, this is going to be a, a big coalition and everybody could dedicate either sharing, uh, on social media, or maybe one day going to Salinas and joining us for a rally or zooming in and making a public comment on our city council meeting coming up in Aga. So anyways, it's just my plea to please, please get involved in your government because this is going to affect everything from potholes to your rent.
Thank you. I might, I mean, I would, I would love to invite you back. I know you just got here today, but, but I would love to have you back. So please keep K Squid in mind.
Oh, I appreciate your station very much because, you know, I hear you guys do a lot of volunteer work and getting the word out on these issues. It would be my honor to come here. Plus my daughter goes to UCSE.
Woo-hoo, slugs.
Yeah. She's my little baby slug, as my wife calls her. And, and we'd love to visit her tonight. I'd love to have the opportunity to get the community more involved and engaged. So thank you.
Thank you. You've been listening to Talk of the Bay with me, Meiling Ominana. Our wonderful guest was Salinas Councilmember Andrew Sandoval, District Five.